on bass, clarinet, Jacqueline Hong; on voice, Kirsten Frumpkin;
Professional theater as a high schooler in the state of Illinois without being in Chicago. The rehearsals are a lot of fun and it's a lot of work and it really teaches you to really hold your own if you decide to go in the professional world and just as a person to just kind of keep yourself organized and never let up because once you do, they'll find you and make it known. And it definitely changed my life from my first day as a sophomore and really, I don't know, you just, you form bonds with people that you'll ever forget and you work with people who are incredibly talented and really inspire you to work harder to better yourself as a performer and a person. So, thank you.
Three years, that's quite an accomplishment to be selected and participating in three different productions. From Vernon Hills, David Valentino was a member of the Allstate Crew from this production. There's David. And Michael Wagner participated in the pit orchestra for Allstate Theater at Vernon Hills. And from Libertyville?
This year we had Lee Starovich in the pit and Jackie Hong in the pit and also Wilson Obedall in the cast.
I'm not sure if you noticed, I'll talk while they're... I don't know if you noticed, there was a little reunion happening up here. The students were from the other schools, although I haven't seen you since Allstate. That was kind of nice. And now it's my pleasure to introduce Vernon Hills High School Principal, Dr. Ellen Swift.
I also agree with Marina that this is just, if we could have a world built on all the kids in this, in this class, in this library, we'd solve all the problems of the world right here. So this is just a fantastic group and I offer my congratulations to everyone also. At this time, I'm going to introduce Randy Sundell and, just Randy Sundell to do our IMEA Allstate.
Let me call your name, but our Vernon Hills High School musicians, please come forward. Andrew Welter on trombone, Cole Moffett, voice, Danny Park, clarinet, Eddie Rumzes, bassoon, Emily Paul, voice, Jason Song, violin, John Papandrea, voice, Joseph Ho, violin, Laura Brooks, piccolo, Lisa Schertok, violin, Luke Hanson, voice, Michael Wagner, French horn, and Mitch Evatt on trombone. And also Frank Fodder will be, is also with us. She's our associate band and orchestra director.
Next I have Cheryl Olson, who will present our DECA Awards. Cheryl?
This has been a great year for Vernon Hills DECA Business Club. We had 15 state winners advanced to the international conference in Louisville, Kentucky. It is my privilege to introduce to you our first place state team of the Entrepreneurship Promotion Event, Erin Bolanowski and Lauren Gruney.
I'm not sure I see Sean Kevir here for FBLA. Is Sean Kevir? I don't think I see him, so I'll go ahead and announce the winners. We had first place winners at FBLA. Our first place winners in the state are, please come forward, Andy Clark, Azvard Moody, Kate Banks, Matt Weinberg, and Nelly Rahimi. Next we have our math team. Our math team was overall third in the state this year and we have first place state winners and Cheryl Ballinger here. She's our math teacher. Any math assistant coaches here? I'll do the math team. Okay, our winners in first place in the calculator team is Andrew Tong, David Kim, Perrin Kadakia, Rachel Wells, and Uden Najia. Please come forward. Our individual first place competition in the pre-calculus event, won first place in the entire state, is Sean Hogan. Sean is also our HSA All Academic State winner and he is our third Vernon Hills Student to Be HSA State All Academic. Congratulations, Sean. We now have our two state champion teams here at Vernon Hills and first I'm going to have come forward is Brittany Henley. I don't know if her assistant coach, Mrs. Sewicki, is here also. So Brittany, go ahead and come forward to introduce our state champion volleyball team.
I'd first like to introduce our seniors, Vanessa Nagel, Cassidy Blair, and Jamie Michael. Our juniors, Catherine Reddick, Courtney Arorik, Arianna Moratton. Our sophomores, Marlee Levin, Michelle Nosbaum, Taylor Harris, Anna Shapiro, Elizabeth Chapman, Kristen Cayman, Jaclyn Bernis, and our two freshmen, Deena Pacina, Pacina and Becca Silbar.
And last but not least, our state champion Weiss Academic Challenge Team coached by Josh Ravenscraft. Josh?
Okay, our Weiss team finished first. It was a back-to-back state champion this year and I'm very, very, very proud of my team. We scored a 491 out of 500, which is very, it's incredible, but also incredible was the second place team was 60 points below us. So our students really, really showed what our academics here at Vernon Hills are made of, so. All right, here's the team. Andrew Welter, Brian Palmero, Ryman Q, David Kim, Dylan Skiin, Jessica Block, Kenny Shavel, Chris Groth, Motzy Kathuria, Mark June, Mason Kessler, Mike Wagner, Moya Chen, and Sean Hogan.
Ladies and gentlemen, before we conclude our recognition, how about a big round of applause for these talented student girls at Vernon Hills High School. Isn't this good?
Wow. Okay, next. Yeah, anybody that wants to stay is free to stay. The best is you have to go home. Okay, we are not quite finished with recognition yet, so at this point, we would like to recognize our outgoing school board representatives. Oh, that's right.
Yes, in addition, we have a short ed. presentation this evening. Each year, as part of our library grant that we must do for the state, we need to report to the board about our library programs. So I'm happy to introduce Ms. Monica Tolba, our librarian from Vernon Hills High School, who has a brief presentation for you on life, a day in the life of the library.
Yes, thank you so much. Well, on February 10th, 2010, that was a good date, 2-10-2010, the Illinois Library Association asked all of its member libraries to take a snapshot of a day in the life of the library. The purpose of this day was to document the major impact that libraries have on their communities and then to use this data to impress upon state lawmakers the great need to continue funding for libraries. Snapshot Day was a great success, with many libraries, including this one, collecting doodles of statistics and testimony on the importance of libraries. What was not so successful was the effort to ensure state funding. Unfortunately, I attended this afternoon possibly the last library-specific professional development class available in the northern suburbs. As of May 31st, the north suburban library system is laying off all of its staff, including its leader, and closing its doors for lack of money. I rely on these library systems for training, consulting, networking, and interlibrary loan, and almost all of these functions will not continue. But the good news is what will continue, thanks to the good financial planning of this board, is the wonderful library media program that Vernon Hills High School has. I used a great online tool called Anamoto to make this video that tries to give you a slice of life here in the library. So try to count how many times the students say they love the chairs that rock.
What do I love about the IRC is the people are so, and the resources are always going out with presentations and, I think, so.
Most incredible thing about the IRC is the ability to stand.
I think the most incredible thing about the IRC are these chairs.
You can teach computers and talk with friends for a project.
What I love about the library is really nice, but it's really quiet, like never the invaders step.
And then I feel like we would like to watch it.
The library? I like the library because I have friendships with librarians and...
What do you love about the library?
The nice people.
Any questions for Monica?
Thank you, Monica.
All right, thank you very much. Now, moving on to further recognition. We would like to recognize our outgoing student school board representatives. As those of us on the board know, the school student school board representative is a very important position for all of us on the board. It is our, shall we say, perhaps best route to finding out what's really going on in the schools. And so I just want you two to know, we really look forward every month to the report that you have, to keep us abreast of all the different things that are going on in each of the two high schools every month. You've done an outstanding job. It was truly one of the best parts about being board president this year, being part of the selection process and really getting, I think firsthand, a good perspective on really the great quality of the kids we have for this position. So you guys have performed admirably, you've represented your school as well, and we appreciate everything that you did this year. So thanks for all your hard work. Elizabeth, we'll start with you. And we have a small plaque for Elizabeth that says, "Community High School District 128 Board of Education extends a special thank you to you, Elizabeth Oldenburg, for her outstanding service as the 2009-2010 Libertyville High School Student Representative to the Board. Her dedication on behalf of her fellow students has enhanced the communication and understanding of missions between the students and board members." Thank you. You're welcome, thank you. And Nancy? Okay, I'd also like to take this moment to acknowledge also the hard work of our alternates to the school board, who actually serve in a backup role to the primary school board representatives, but also they spend a lot of time with us every month at lunch, also helping us to get a good perspective of what's going on in school. So, from LHS, Hannah Diamond. This evening, Julianne McLean from Vernon Hills High School. All right, thanks again, everybody, for all your hard work. Also from next year, I would just like to mention the school board representatives for Libertyville High School will have co-representatives next year. Hannah Mallory, welcome Hannah. Eric Engstrom. Okay. And also from Vernon Hills High School, Nydia Vagavatula. The alternate for Vernon Hills High School, Andrew Wood.
Mary, can we get a picture of all four of the board reps with Pat?
Our alternates, yeah, top five are new ones, too.
I think the last time I was in that many pictures, I was getting married. My kids will be watching, because they're usually on the other side of the lens. I'm the one that takes them off. Okay, moving right along. Superintendent's report. Oh no, I'm sorry. 2010-2011 IASB membership. Who's got that?
Essentially, this time of year is the time that we review our, we renew our Illinois Association of School Board's membership. So we would just...
Just a motion, okay? So can I have a motion to renew our Illinois Association of School Board membership? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Tally?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Sunsteve?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now, one last bit of business for you two. Okay, reports from our school board representatives. Nancy, we can start with you.
Sure. This school year has gone by remarkably fast. We had our yearbooks come out Friday and final start this Friday, so the hallways are kind of this funny mix of people sending yearbooks and freaking out over semester grades, but it's been good. We had our prom at the Weston on May 15th, which was an extremely fun event for the juniors and seniors that attended. We also had our spring recognition assembly this past Friday, and as you guys all know, we have a number of great achievements to recognize at that as well. Our wrestling team also conducted a special tournament over two weekends this past month to raise money for cancer and they were extremely successful in that. And we have our spring sports nights award tomorrow, which will wrap up our spring sports season. We've had a number of athletes that have done extremely well, especially our boys' volleyball team, who has won conference champion for the third year in a row this year. And we've been witnessing a lot of other student talent from our art show in Cabaret last Tuesday, and we have a number of students go to the regional LISA art competition as well. And we have our last orchestra concert this Wednesday, which will feature a number of extremely talented seniors as they perform their senior solos. So we have our honors assembly this Thursday and graduation next Thursday, so the seniors are getting ready to say goodbye and just wrap up the year. And on a personal note, I wanted to thank the school board for the opportunity to let me serve here the last year. It's been one of the most unique and most, the best learning experiences I've had in high school, so thank you so much for everything.
And although, like Motzy said, the year's wrapping down, there are still a lot of things going on. Specifically, mentioned earlier, Mr. Shoup retiring after 36 years, that's incredible. And the band actually just had their concert last week. Also in the music department, or theater and arts department, the art show was last Friday, and they also opened the art gallery, which is gorgeous, and I know a lot of time and effort has been put into designing and building and funds and stuff for that, so that is great and I know students really appreciate it. And it's really great because a lot of teachers let students go down during the art show during the day to see what great work that other students can make, and it's always amazed me because I had no artistic ability. And prom was also last week at Lexington Concord, and it was, how sweet it was, how sweet it is, and it was definitely a lot of fun. Spring awards are tomorrow night, and I know a lot of seasons are still in the process of wrapping up, but it's just been a great athletic season for LHS all around. And unfortunately, the girls lacrosse team did not win against New Cheer tonight, but it was still a great game and we finished strong. Also, honors night, recognizing our seniors for scholarships will be Wednesday night, so it's crazy that the year's finally wrapping down. And also, like Motzy had also mentioned, I just want to thank the school board for giving us this opportunity. I, it's one of my favorite things I've done all year, really, just hearing what you guys have to say and communicating. It's definitely developed my skills as a person that I will take to college, and I just look forward to coming back and thanking, thanking you guys again for the opportunity and also excited to see our new reps next year. So thank you.
Very good, thank you. Anybody like to share what their plans are for next year?
Oh, well, I will be attending Purdue University because I got directly into their nursing program, so I'm very excited. And I'll be attending the University of Illinois at Chicago in their GPPA medicine program.
Great, congratulations to both of you. And I would also mention, today at lunch, actually, we had asked them to do a little project for us, actually, to give us some feedback on what we might be able to do as administrative... administration and board to make the position even more valuable for the kids. There was no shortage of suggestions. So they did a great job, some things for us to think about, and we'll certainly be working next year to make it an even better opportunity. So thanks for your input. Okay, moving on, superintendent's report. Let's relieve.
The good news continues. Congratulations to the following Vernon Hills High School students who were named May Cougar Class Act Award winners. Megan Bass, Daniel Faya, Brian Joswiak, Omar Abdallah, Zach Zider, Emily Schwartz, Mary LeFolorenski, Nicole Amari, Maria Roses, Sierra Carroll, and Kiana Chow, and Joyce Zai. Congratulations to the following Libertyville High School students who were named May Students of the Month. Tara Jensen, Margaret McKernan, William Matthews, Isidro Gonzalez, Kelsey Welch, James Stalbaum, Alan Phan, Michelle Shetley, Candace Crenager, Patrick Segru, Alicia Dowke, and Amber Staines. Congratulations to LHS band director John Shoup, who was selected by his peers as recipient at the 2010 John Painter Lifetime Achievement Award. Mr. Shoup will receive the award at next month's Chicagoland Outstanding Music Awards, sponsored annually by Quinlan and Favish Music Company. VHHS student Luke Nedza was awarded third place for his oil painting, and Jessica Kim was awarded second place for her oil acrylic painting at the 10th District Congressional Art Show. The two paintings will hang for next year in Congressman Mark Kirk's Washington office. This is the second year in a row that VHHS students received this honor. The Best of Best show was held on Sunday, May 16th, at Chicago's Thompson Center. LHS student Ellie Hoquist won second place and $500 for her handmade metal book, and Ellie Musket won first place for her monogram design using Adobe Illustrator. LHS students competed against 27 other students, or schools, in more than 600 pieces of artwork from the city of Chicago and surrounding areas, so that certainly underscores the great fine arts that we have at both of our schools. And finally, we have some special congratulations this evening. Judy Sugarman. Congratulations to District 128 Board of Education Vice President Judy Sugarman and LHS Principal Secretary Sandra Cruckman, who were recently named Award of Merit recipients in the annual Distinguished Service Awards Program, sponsored by the Illinois Chapter of the National School Public Relations Association, or INSpro. Judy was honored in the board member category, and Sandra was honored in the support staff category at an honors breakfast earlier this month. Since Judy was unable to attend the awards breakfast due to a prior commitment, I would like to take this opportunity to present Judy with her award now, and thank her once again for all that she has done for our district as a teacher, department supervisor, resident, and board member. Judy, would you please join Pat and I up front here? We'd like to give you your certificate. Another month of great news in District 128, and a great group of students and staff that we have here. Next on the superintendent's report this evening, are two administrative appointments. Based on my annual review of the District 128 Strategic Plan Goals and Progress, LHS and VHHS School Improvement and RTI Plan Goals and Progress, and the leadership transitions necessary to take District 128 and our two world-class high schools to the next level, I am making two important leadership recommendations this evening. First, I am recommending that current VHHS Assistant Principal for Curriculum and Instruction, John Gilliam, be appointed as the VHHS Associate Principal effective July 1, 2010. As you are aware, John brings a highly effective skill set and experiences to his current Assistant Principal role, and he has consistently served VHHS in many leadership capacities beyond the traditional Assistant Principal role, effectively functioning as the Chief Operating Officer at VHHS. As such, his appointment as Associate Principal recognizes his outstanding work as an Assistant Principal for Curriculum and Instruction, and his broader leadership and management roles there, and formally aligns his position title with his actual position responsibilities. As the Associate Principal, John will continue to assume leadership for VHHS Curriculum and Instruction, as well as his broader leadership and management roles. No additional administrative position opening will be created by John's appointment as VHHS Associate Principal. Second, I am recommending that current LHS Assistant Principal for Curriculum and Instruction, Diane Phillips, be appointed as the new District 128 Director of Community Education and Grants, replacing Dr. Buzz Perry, who retires June 30th, 2011. Diane's appointment will be effective July 1st, 2011. The Community Education and Grants position incorporates our community education program, federal and state grants, district rentals, and summer school. The unique nature of this position requires a very specific skill set to effectively plan, implement, and account for the myriad of critical detail required in these areas. With Diane's accounting, financial, and strong management background, she will build upon the outstanding work that Dr. Perry continues to do in serving District 128 stakeholders. By making the appointment now, Buzz and Diane will have a full year of transition and critical protocol procedures prior to Diane assuming the position full-time. Diane will continue to serve as the LHS Assistant Principal for Curriculum and Instruction throughout the transition period. An administrative position opening will be created by Diane's appointment as Director of Community Education and Grants. We have an outstanding group of potential candidates within District 128 for the LHS Assistant Principal for Curriculum and Instruction position. As a result, that position will only be posted internally. The LHS Assistant Principal for Curriculum and Instruction position description and details regarding the application process will be emailed to District 128 staff by Tuesday, June 1st, and a final recommendation to the board will follow shortly after the interview process. I have encouraged District 128 staff with appropriate certification and interest to apply for this position. By moving forward with the application, interview, and selection process now, again, a successful candidate will have a full year of transition with Dr. Scott and Ms. Phillips prior to assuming the position. A successful candidate will continue to serve in his or her current position throughout the transition year. So we would be looking for a separate vote on both of the recommendations, first on John Gilliam as Associate Principal at Vernon Hills High School, and then second, the appointment of Diane Phillips as the new Director of Community Education and Grants.
Okay, thank you very much. Can I have a motion to appoint John Gilliam as VHHS Associate Principal?
I move to appoint John Gilliam as VHHS Associate Principal effective 2010 July 1.
Okay, second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munstead?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munstead?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munstead?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on, next item on the superintendent's report is the 2009-10 Final School Calendar. And at this time of year, we have to present the board with a final school calendar reflecting any adjustments from the year. Deb, as she always does, updates our calendar, so this would be our recommendation as our final calendar. So we'll be looking for a motion to approve the final calendar for 9-10 school year.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Munstead?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munstead?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munstead?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munstead?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munstead?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munstead?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on, next item on the superintendent's report is the 2009-10 Final School Calendar. And at this time of year, we have to present the board with a final school calendar reflecting any adjustments from the year. Deb, as she always does, updates our calendar, so this would be our recommendation as our final calendar. So we'll be looking for a motion to approve the final calendar for 9-10 school year.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Munstead?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munstead?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munstead?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munstead?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munstead?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munstead?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munstead?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munstead?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munstead?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munstead?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munstead?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munstead?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munstead?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munstead?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munstead?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munstead?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munstead?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munstead?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munstead?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munstead?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munstead?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munstead?
If I could have a motion to accept the consent vote agenda, please.
I move to accept the consent vote agenda as presented.
Any, second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munstead?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Program and Personnel Committee?
I think I'll go ahead and give that report, since Ellen isn't here. The first item, and help me along here, since I've never done this before, would be to bring forward for the second reading and adoption?
Correct.
For Policy 430 Revenue and Investments, Cooperation Services.
Okay, we believe we reviewed this in the Program and Personnel Committee meeting. Okay?
So I'd like to have a motion.
Move to approve 430 on revenue and investments.
Second?
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munstead?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Next, we have the educational tour requests. There are six of them. The first three were presented at our committee meeting, and the last three have come since then. LHS Girls' varsity volleyball camp at the University of Illinois, Champaign, July 23rd to 25th in 2010. Number two is VHHS Spanish students' trip to Cuzco and Lima, Peru, in July, August of 2011. Third, VHHS part of the U.S. delegation with the Cola Alliance' trip to St. Jerome Cola Elementary School in Depica, Uganda, again in July and August of 2011. Number four, the LHS Girls' varsity basketball trip to Purdue University Camp in June of this year, 2010. Number five, LHS choir trip to Italy, March into April of 2011. And number six, LHS-VHHS French Exchange Summer School Program trip to France, June 8th to 28th in 2011.
I move to approve the six educational tour requests as described.
Second?
Any discussion?
I just want to say, because as a former foreign language teacher, it just thrills me to no end to see so many international trips. Having had interactions with students as a result of international trips, these, as a general rule, change kids' lives forever, and even changes some adult lives, wouldn't you say, Ellen?
Absolutely.
So I just am thrilled to death to see as many international trips, and I just fully support them.
Great. I'm sure the trip to Uganda in particular will, if not change, certainly touch another world, so it's a great lesson.
Great. And next, we have a textbook requirement.
Roll call, please.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munstead?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
And now, we have the adoption of three additional textbooks in addition to what we approved last month for the year 2010, 2011.
Okay.
Do you want to list them?
No. Okay. Motion to?
Move to approve textbook adaption of the three additional items.
Second? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munstead?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Okay, and then, finally, we have additional employment of employees. These are not part of the consent vote agenda because they've come after our meeting.
Correct.
So, certified staff replacement hires, Sari Nieto, Spanish, LHS; David Tribbley Music, VHHS; educational support personnel replacement hire, Todd Schneider, SAP Coordinator for LHS; educational support personnel retirements, Luis Calmas, VHHS Study Hall Monitor, and Jacqueline Ferguson, VHHS Hall Monitor; educational support personnel release, Amy